To the May 22nd, 2014 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have gotten Dr. J.B. Morris to step in and take the prayer and pledge. Dr. Morris is with the Rock Hill in Woods United Methodist Church. Now, we just asked him to do this, so if anything happens, it's my fault. Dr. Woods, please stand.
May the blessings of heavens rest upon each one of us here tonight, our heavenly Father. And we come to you with an open heart, open mind, and dear Lord, we pray that this meeting tonight will start in harmony and end in harmony. And dear Lord, let us be able to come together, reason together, and reach out to each other. Dear Lord, we just pray for the leadership here tonight. They have lots to do, they have lots to look after. And our heavenly Father, we just pray for all the council ones and the mayor. Also, we want to lift up the people that work here. We ask you to bless them and nourish them. But dear Lord, we just ask you to look at what we need to do and let us be able to reach out and help other people. Let our country, our heavenly Father, revert back to the old times so that we can have a foundation. Because if we don't stand for something, we stand for nothing. And our heavenly Father, we come to this time in our program to say to you, we love you and appreciate you, and thank you so much, our heavenly Father, for looking after each one of us on our journey through life. Amen.
Amen. Now, let us say the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor, wonderful job. Unbeknownst, at the beginning of meeting, the Reverend Kip Salser with the discipleship and connections minister at First Baptist Church actually was here. He was unable to find a place to seat. Pastor, we apologize, but thank you, Dr. Woods. Okay, now that we got that straightened out, let's go with Mr. Gary Floyd. Oh, you want to talk about, did you want to talk about a zoning item, or? Okay, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to the city of Longview all of who are here. This is Longview City Charter Article 2, City Council Section 203, Council Qualifications, Section D, reads, "Having paid a filing fee of $100 or having submitted a petition for candidacy in lieu of a filing fee, and a said petition must be signed by not less than the greater of the 25 qualified voters of the territory from which the office is elected to equal to one-half of the 1% of the total received in the said territory by all candidates for mayor in the most recent general election." That's what it reads in that article. I am recommending that the article and that section be changed to have no nominal monetary filing fee and require a petition with 20 signatures of registered voters from which the district in which the candidate resides as a mandatory and not as an optional requirement for placing a candidate's name on the ballot. The monetary filing fee might be perceived as a poll tax construed to keep individuals off the ballot. The 20 signatures with no monetary fee on a petition is a better basis for having a candidate's name on the ballot. The $100 filing fee was implemented by the mayor and council to say or determine if a candidate was legitimate. I don't believe anyone should be attempting to determine, to say that a candidate's filing or run for an office is legitimate, but the citizens of Longview. I believe the council should move quickly to make the change prior to the next election cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. So you think we ought to say, instead of being 25 people live in the district, go down to 20? Because if you get 25 people to sign, you don't put any monetary nominal fee up. So you're saying instead of 25, you ought to have 20?
It's not an option.
Well, there's an option right now. You can put $100 up, you can get 25 signatures. But anyway, thank you for being here. We appreciate your comments. Ms. Natalie Rabicoff.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to come and congratulate you on the dedication of the depot, and I'd like to really give a hand to Dietrich and to Laurhill, because everybody that joined me, is she here tonight? They did a beautiful job all weekend, and it really was something to celebrate with the beginning of the restoration of the depot and what good things are going to happen in our community. And from the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank you and the ones that worked with them for the beautiful plaque that you put up at the depot and my husband's in my honor. It's something that I never expected, and I didn't think I'd be alive to see the depot being restored, but I'm going to tell you, the people have really got a jewel that belongs to the community of Longview, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Dr. J.B. Morris.
Brother Dean and members of the council, I appreciate you allowing me to come and briefly talk to you just for a few seconds. Many of the questions that I had in my letter has been answered, and you have that letter in front of you. And I want to share with you that I'm here representing the membership at Paul and Morton Jones Recreational Center, and we have some concerns, and I've been assured that we can be able to work through those. But I think it's be very important for you to know that you have a gold mine, and we need to get that information out, because the city of Longview has this opportunity to be able to let Paul and Morton Jones become, I guess, a place for all the people. You could have family nights, you could have a brochure developed with various sections on it to show what is out there for the people. So many people out there are not knowledgeable on what Paul and Morton Jones is all about. Because I know, I was able to recruit two people from the Russ County Retired Teachers Association, and they came up and said, "I am glad that you said something about this." Now, we need more people to do that. And how do we get that word out? Every one of us must pull together. And what we were thinking, that maybe a brochure of some sort that could be developed so that you could take it and talk to various organizations. I can foresee that all of the faculty members at all the schools would love to see this and understand what's available. That's not being done. Now, you say, "Well, we have it on the website." That's good. But lots of people out there don't pay any attention to those websites, and I want you to know that at the age of 78, I'm being pulled into the computer age, and I'm not going, gently, I want you to know that, amen? Now, some of you out there just really have to walk around with an earphone in your ear all the time, and I'm just the opposite. I don't want to be wired up. But basically, what I'm here to share with you is that we need to have a better way of communicating, because our members have asked me to come, and after talking to some of you, I was willing to back down, but I said, "Well, while I'm here, I might as well share with you something I felt dearly in my heart, that we need to let people know in the area." Because Longview has a tremendous trade area. See, I live in Joinerville. Why would they ask me to come up here when I could have been in my easy chair at home? You know? But that's what they asked me to do, and that's what I tried to do. And so, in my letter, you'll notice I have mentioned the Gregg County Retired Teachers Association. That's a wonderful organization for all retired school employees, and the doors there are open. It's about like going out and harvesting, and the harvest is there, but we need workers to be able to do that. And so Laura assured me that we'll get together. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I took up so much time. Are there any questions?
Okay. Did you have something more? They said give you some more time if you needed it.
Well, the only thing I have was the letter I gave each one of you on your desk. But if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay. Ms. Allen?
Not a question, no. I've visited the facility several times, visited before we did the renovation on the swimming pool and afterwards, and in fact, I've taken some of my family over there and shown them. It's a wonderful facility. I agree with you completely. We need to work on more publicity, because it's a gem that needs to be used. I mean, a diamond gem or whatever, not just a gem. Anyway, it needs to be used. It's a good facility.
And like I say, you've got a gold mine there, and we need to go ahead and get people to know more about it.
And I'd like to say that people that take care of it do a very good job of giving it a home feeling. I mean, it doesn't have a commercial feeling to it, it has a home feeling.
Yeah. And the people there that you work out with and talk to, they're just family, I want you to know this, and it's great to have that feeling that you can go there. And it's for all people, it's not for this person or this person, it's open to everyone. And that's, we're going to cross all kinds of cultures and backgrounds and everything else. I appreciate y'all. No, I took too much time, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Woods. Okay, election items. Presentation of Oath of Office of Councilmembers-Elect of District 3, which will go first. Ms. Casha?
Where's the book? Oh, yeah, oh, nevermind.
I state your name.
I, Casha Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of councilmember District 3.
Of councilmember District 3.
Of the city of Longview.
Of the city of Longview.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'm going to introduce, Cash, you want to introduce your family?
Sure.
Okay.
Am I here or you want me to go?
No, go to the dais.
Y'all got me again. How about that? Okay, I have my mother and my father, if you would stand, Cedric and Kathy Williams. My Aunt Patty Tolz is here. My good friend Vic Burma, of course. My good dear Sarah Andre Mayo, and Beverly Christopher from Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and Herbert McCarty. Thank you.
Okay. And then the councilmember-elect of District 4, we're going to, first of all, though, I think there's a presentation. Mr. Frost. Okay. All right. We have some, first of all, we have some flyers from Miss Friedan, I think, let me, hold a second, let me, I think there's something in that card. And staff said, wherever it is, "Thanks for letting us borrow your husband for the last nine years." Here you go. And then we have a plaque for Mr. Frost, City Councilman, District 4, from '05 to 2014. You know, when Wayne was elected in 2005, and I was elected mayor in 2005, I don't have to tell a lot of you that there was a lot of discord on this council, and our number one goal was to try to bring, you know, some respect, and we can agree to disagree, but to bring respect back to the council. And there hadn't been a person on this council that's been a better, you know, stalwart and, you know, respectful and decent human being than Wayne Frost. And I hate seeing you go, but I won't be far behind you. So, would you say a few words, Mr. Frost?
Well, I thank him for those kind words. He's been a great leader since I've been on this council. And I thank all the people in my district and the city of Longview for the confidence they place in me. I've enjoyed serving you, and you're getting a good lady. She looks a whole lot better than I do, sitting up here, and she'll do fine. And just appreciate everybody that's been involved, I've been involved with through these nine years. This is my wife Frieda, my grandson Aaron, granddaughter Sadie, and my daughter Shelley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. Okay, now, we're going to have the council-elect for District 4.
I, Kristen Ishihara. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully execute. That I will faithfully execute. The duties of the office. The duties of the office. Of councilmember District 4. Of councilmember District 4. Of the city of Longview. Of the city of Longview. Of the state of Texas. Of the state of Texas. And to the best of my ability. And to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend. Preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution and laws. The Constitution and laws. Of the United States. Of the United States. And of this state. And of this state. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you. Hi, sweetie. You're so pretty.
Okay, you can introduce your family.
Oh, yes, this is my husband, Richard, my son, Lucas, and my daughter, Brianna.
All right, good deal. Okay. Okay, we want to welcome Ms. Kristen to the Longview City Council. We look forward to working with you, and there's your pretty certificate.
Thank you.
Okay, and there's, I think, some paperwork for you to sign. And we're going to move into the presentation item. Presentation of a 30-year pin to Mike Grisham by Don Dingler. I tried to give you some of this hammer, buddy. Did you, did they give you your computer?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, Mr. Willard. It's always nice when we get to recognize one of our long-term employees. Tonight, it's Officer Mike Grisham. Mike began his career with the Longview Police Department in 1984. He was served as a patrol officer for two years, and then he transferred to the traffic unit. Many of the Longview citizens will recognize Mike. He's one of our longtime motorcycle officers. Many times that the citizens had contact with Mike, may not have been a real pleasant meeting, but he does a great job, and he's a very professional officer. He was one of our first dare officers also. He served on the Meritorious Conduct Board, the Applicant Interview Board, and the Accident Review Board. He received his Associate Degree in Criminal Justice from Kilgore College, and is a certified motorcycle instructor, master police officer, and accident reconstructionist. Officer Grisham has received numerous commendations, has been nominated for the Officer of the Year multiple times, and has received the Certificate of Merit Award. Mike and his wife Karen have two children, Molly, a student and soccer player at the University of North Texas, and Kevin, 19, who works for Union Pacific Railroad. Mike, I have a certificate of appreciation that says, "In recognition and appreciation of 30 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the Longview Police Department and to the citizens of Longview, Texas."
Okay, council consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda council would like to pull for separate consideration? On which item?
The item has to do with the fire department, with the...
What item? You know?
Well, my computers. Your computers.
Item A.
Item A?
A.
Okay, item A.
Your breathing apparatus?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Chief, you want to?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Just one brief. In the second year of purchase, it looks like about $400,000, and there's a grant listed there. What is the possibility of obtaining this grant?
The last time in 2002, when we actually received all of this equipment, we received it via that grant. So it's hard to say. This is a national grant that we're competing against every other fire department for a limited pot of money. We actually, we're in the middle of that grant process right now. We probably won't know anything until late summer, early fall.
Okay. But we did previously...
We have been awarded this grant for this particular purchase in the past. So now that we're at the end of that service life for that equipment, I would say we stand a fairly decent chance of getting some recognition for reinstituting that same process, because we've proven the value of it in our department.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Isn't that that equipment that not many departments actually have? Is that that piece?
No, no, no.
Which one is that one?
This is the breathing apparatus that we issued. This is probably the second most important piece of protective safety equipment that our firefighters use next to their protective clothing ensemble. This is what allows them to go into those hazardous environments and breathe fresh air while they perform things like search and rescue and fire attack and essential duties of the job on the fire ground.
If not, may I have a motion?
Tell them.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, chief. Public hearings. Item A, to receive citizen input on a substantial amendment to fiscal year 2013, 2014 of the Consolidated Action Plan. Martell? Nope, Martell is not going to do that. I'm sorry, introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, my name is Parker Harrison. I'm with the Housing and Community Development Department.
They did give me your name, I just lost it, but that's okay. Thank you for being here.
I'm on behalf of, here on for Martell.
Okay.
If I need to read them.
This item requires a public hearing. Do y'all have any questions this time? Okay, so the requires a public hearing, the public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion? Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Item B is to receive citizen input on the five-year consolidated plan in fiscal year 2014 and 15. Any questions on that particular item? This item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this matter? Let's at least get the Boy Scouts over here. Y'all got any questions, guys? Okay, just wanted to make sure. We just want, we just wanted to make sure. Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion? Have a motion?
Say.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, sir. Action items. Item A, to consider resolution of the City Council of the city of Longview, Texas approving the amended Consolidated Action Plan. You might as well stay up there. Okay. So now, we're actually taking, taking action on the public hearing. Any questions? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Say.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion passes. B, the same thing. Consider resolution of the City Council approving the five-year consolidated plan for fiscal years 2014, 2015. Questions? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Say.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. See, your first meeting always, that always happens, Kristen. Same thing with me. I sat there, I was ready to, I was ready to make a motion. I didn't get to make any motions. You remember that, Andy? I was, I was ready to go. I want to recognize former Councilman Andy Mack that's here tonight. Andy, thanks for coming. Okay, items of community interest. Mr. Sims.
Well, I get to bring up what I brought up premature three weeks ago. We're going to miss Wayne, but I tell you what, he's got a good replacement, and I'm going to look forward to working with Kristen.
Good deal. Okay, Mr. Gary.
Mr. Mayor, I gave a proclamation to the 26th Annual Convention for the Airborne, I kind of lost my page on that. But on your behalf, I told them that the city was very proud of their convention, and we'll do whatever we can to support that effort, and that's about it on that, Robin. I want to congratulate, you know, Councilwoman Williams and Councilwoman Ishihara on the election to the council.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Casha?
Glad to be back. Three more years, looking forward to continuing to move forward in not only District 3, but in the community. Want to thank the citizens who did come out and vote. Your vote is your voice. And also want to welcome Councilwoman, Councilwoman Kristen Ishihara to the council. Glad to have you. And I just, as being sworn in tonight, I just want to also acknowledge how much I enjoy serving with this council and mayor, and thank you all for your support, and let's just move Longview forward together.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Ishihara?
Thank you. I did want to take this opportunity to thank the citizens of Longview and District 4 for giving me this opportunity to serve. I look forward to serving you and also with this council, and I will take my first opportunity to do a community interest and congratulate Ms. Betty Haryney, who is our 2014 Zonta Woman of Achievement. We'll have her luncheon next Tuesday. Mayor Dean will be there to read our proclamation, so we're very excited about that, and I wanted to congratulate her.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Just want to echo, congratulate...
Just want to echo congratulations to the two ladies on the council. Look forward to working with you.
Good deal. Ms. Allen?
Congratulations to both of you. Yes. Ms. Ishihara, you're going to be in a very interesting period of time because you're going to have a new mayor, you're going to have several new council people, so it'll be quite a turnover and I'm sure you'll enjoy it.
You wrote that whole yellow pad full of stuff and that's it?
That's it. My pen quit, my pen quit working.
Okay, I just checking. I didn't know if you were doodling or you actually writing something to read. Okay, City of Longview offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day on Monday, May 26. The sanitation division will not pick up trash on Monday, so neighbors, please know that we are not picking up trash on Monday, so if you put it outside and the dogs get it, oh, well. The trash collection schedule will remain on normal schedule for the remainder of the week. The Longview Police Department is hosting a free women's safety course. This program will be held June 9, 2014 through June 14, 2014. Classes will begin at 6:00 PM at the Maude Cobb Activities Center, 100 Grand Boulevard in Longview. This course will include women's safety, workplace violence, and women handgun safety class, a firearm simulator, shooting course, and a hands-on range day. For additional information, contact Officer Christie Bryan at (903) 808-3388 or visit Parents, get your kids signed up for the Longview Public Library's Summer Reading Program. The program encourages kids ages 12 and under to read every day and it rewards them for doing it. Special event presentations and movies will be held at summer, all summer, excuse me. Sign up at the library's children's desk. The program starts on June 13 at 10:00 AM with a kickoff party on the library plaza. Learn more at library.longviewtexas.gov or call (903) 237-1345. Did you have anything, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir, not unless you need me to answer a question for you or anything.
Well...
Congratulations to the two ladies again.
Yeah, well, again, congratulate both of y'all. It's going to be interesting. It's been, it's been some time since we had actually two ladies on the city council, so we look forward to y'all working and helping some of us out, okay? Add a little, and adding, I was, I was going to say add a little class to the group anyway. Meeting is adjourned.